Councilor Baker.
Yeah.
Councilor Campbell.
Here.
Councilor Ciomo.
I'm going to take the whole bench.
Councilor Edwards.
Here.
Councilor Asabi George. Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Flynn. Councilor Janey.
Did you go to, um...
Councilor McCarthy. Councilor O'Malley.
Present.
Councilor Presley.
Present.
Councilor Wu.
Present.
And Councilor Zegum. Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like all colleagues and guests to please rise. Our lovely Madam Clerk is going to come and give the invocation. I ask that after invocation, everyone remain standing as Madam Clerk leads us in a pledge of allegiance.
Spirit of life and love which moves through us and through all the world, may we this day be grateful for the gift of life which is ours, remembering today and always that the life we have and hold is to us a mystery and precious. May we this day be reminded of the responsibilities we carry, not so that we are intimidated or overwhelmed, but so that we may be true to them, so that we may be faithful in carrying them forward. May we this day maintain a sense of perspective, remembering who we are, engaging in the tasks at hand, but understanding our limitations and understanding our own shortcomings, forgiving ourselves and others if we fall short of perfection. May we this day be inspired, be filled with new breath, be filled with new enthusiasm, be ready to see fresh opportunity, new perspectives, unnoticed avenues for action and resolution. And may we this day remember those virtues that bless our lives and bless the lives of others, the virtues of caring and concern, the virtues of honesty and respect, the virtues of charity, industry, and patience. And may the members of this Boston City Council maintain a high sense of their calling. May they remember that they are invested here with honor and called to a wider vision of the world, a world made more fair, more just, more equitable by their efforts. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry about that. So before I call up Councilor Presley, who has a special presentation, I just want to acknowledge a couple of folks that are in the chamber. First, I'm going to start with Julie from Mother Caroline, where I was this morning, who does incredible work as a Dorchester resident. We all know her. Thank you for the work you do at Mother Caroline. And I want to acknowledge, we have the AKAs in the building, led by Ashley Brown, who is an incredible District 4 resident. They came to join us to talk about civic engagement and to be partners in the work. So thank you, and stand up, please. Thank you to your incredible women for the work you do. And for the work that you do in your, not just in your personal lives, but also professionally to serve our communities, and thank you for joining the council today. Councilor Presley is going to come up for a special presentation.
Yes, that's good. I would like to join the other guests from here.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. I am so delighted you joined me right up here. I was at an event recently in East Boston and learned about an inaugural cohort, a class of graduates, from the Federation for Children with Special Needs. And I was so impressed with what I had heard about the program model that I wanted to introduce them to the rest of the council. For those of you that might not be familiar, I want to thank Claudia Sierra and Olga Lopez for working with me to arrange this presentation for this morning. And so who's standing before us? We have, is it all, is it everyone in the class?
Yes.
Okay, so most of the class. So this is the first cohort for the Latino Parent Leadership Program to graduate within the Federation for Children with Special Needs. This training is called the Latino Parent Leadership Program, PLPFL. The program is of extreme importance because we know that every parent is their child's first educator, but they are also their best advocate. And so the point of this program is to equip parents with the skills and the best practices to better engage the professionals who teach, who service, who support their children with special needs. And there are 30 participants that graduated in that first cohort on October 24th, Wednesday. So congratulations. And we're so appreciative of this innovative model, which supports cultural competency in supporting these parents, providing information, support, and assistance to these parents with children with special needs, and to support them in professional partnership and in community. And what I really love about this is that the core tenet of the Federation's mission is to actively listen and to be led in their work and in their advocacy and in their priorities by the voices of the families most impacted. And I've always believed that the best models are those that are community-driven and government-endorsed. So here's one that is community-driven, and this afternoon, we officially endorse them and congratulate them on their first cohort. Would Olga or Claudia like to come forward and say a few words?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
So, thank you so much and congratulations. Thank you for having us in here. We are very excited that the Federation for first time offered this title training for Latino families in Massachusetts. This is a project that took for us three years to put all together. What is so special about this project, the families that we have here, they are parents' leaders in the community. They know exactly what happened with families in Boston and Massachusetts. So we want to continue empowering those families, working with them very closely, support, nurture them, and to continue their work with the Latino community. That's not just my job, it's their job.
Yeah. Well, thank you and congratulations. But everyone join us at the dials for a photo. And this is for you. We officially recognize you for this incredible model. So we're going to stand right here in the middle, and they're all going to come up and we'll do a photo.
Thank you so much. Come on, let's move on. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so follow me guys. We're going to go this way. I send everyone the one more photo. You're an inspiration. Thank you. Okay. I'm now going to invite up Councilor Edwards, who has another special presentation.
Thank you. Can you have a quick guess? This is a good one. Where are you people? Can you guys come? Oh. Come on up, come on up. Come on up. So, along with the incredible support and the leadership that we've seen in our parents, I wanted to also recognize, in East Boston specifically, the incredible school and leadership of the Donald McKay, particularly Principal Jordan Wymer and the entire family of individuals who've come together as the Donald McKay was recently recognized for $100,000 grant from Ed Vestas. And it's not just the ability to be able to bring back resources, but a really demonstration that this school and the community has risen to the occasion under that leadership, but also in creating a community to make sure that all of our kids feel welcome, supported, and loved. With 95% of the kids at the Donald McKay speaking, not speaking English as a native language, and being able to rise to this occasion to become one of the top schools in East Boston, if not Boston, is by far one of the, again, one of the testaments to the incredible public school system we have and the leadership. So today, I wanted to present this citation to them in recognition of their award. I wanted to also give them an opportunity to speak some words. But I wanted to make sure that we, as a city council, recognize those folks who are in the trenches every day, along with our parents, who are educating our students, who are working with the resources that they have, who are accepting children as they come and making sure that they can lead and grow to the potential that they deserve to. So I wanted to just thank you so much. On behalf of the city council, we are going to present this citation to you, and then also, I'd invite you to speak some words. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I think it's a testament to the incredible work of our students and families, to the support that we receive from the mayor and superintendent, and councilperson Edwards, and before her, councilperson Lamatina, who is also a huge advocate for our schools. This is a job that is done by a community, and we're very proud of the community that we have and the work that we've done as a school.
I'm sorry. My name is Yolanda Thomas Ciescheleng, and I'm a first-grade teacher at the McKay. And we are extremely proud of this award. We've worked really, really hard, and we are thankful for the money. It will go a long way, but most of all, for the recognition of the hard work that we've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we invite everyone up to come take a picture.
Up here?
Close.
Yeah. All right. Thank you so much. Please come out and visit soon.
I should, I'd love to. Congratulations.
Before I move on to the regular boring business of the council meeting, you know, we would be remiss if we did not take a moment to celebrate, yes, that victory that is on the cover of that Metro, our colleague, Councilor Yana Presley, and her incredible victory. And your work on the body and the work that will come, of course. Thank you. Also, thank you to your team, but congratulations. Now, moving on to the other stuff. Approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes of the last council meeting are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1612, message and order for your approval of an order authorizing the City of Boston to appropriate the amount of $6,500,000 from the city's capital grant fund to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the City of Boston.
Docket 1612 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1613, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $966,932 in the form of the FY19 Title III-B Supportive Services awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund a comprehensive and coordinated health and social service system which assists elders to maintain independent living in their community as long as desired.
Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to ask that we suspend the rules and expend the stated amount for the FY19 Title III-B Supportive Services. This fund will allow the Boston Elderly Commission to support programs that deal with health and social services. This will help 60-year-olds and older find the healthcare and achieve the desired social and experience in community that they desire. These funds will provide the much-needed investment to ensure we are allowing our elderly to live and to age in community in place where they grew up and with the families they love. It is holistic in its approach in social and emotional and economical services and engages a population, again, of 60 over, and we want this program to continue to call the City of Boston its home. As the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules and to expend docket 1613 today.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. At this time, Councilor Presley, who is the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1613. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1613 has been passed.
Docket number 1614, message and order for your approval, a declaration of trust entitled "The Make Boston Shine Trust Fund." This trust will further promote the public health, safety, inconvenience, and welfare by encouraging civic engagement, unity, and a sense of neighborhood pride and ownership by supporting residents and community groups in service projects to beautify.
Let's take just a quick recess. Just wanted to get clarification. So docket 1614 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 1615 and 1616 together?
Actually, let's, nope, let's do 1615, and then we'll do 1616 separately.
Great. Thank you. Docket number 1615, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $78,984 in the form of a grant, Title III-D Preventative Health awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund information and services to improve the health of seniors in Boston.
Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This grant is similar in scope to the last grant that we just moved on. However, this grant will also allow the Elderly Commission to support initiatives targeted at ending Alzheimer's and providing travel companions to seniors living with Alzheimer's, to healthcare appointments, and the like. As the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules to accept this grant today.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Presley, who is the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1615. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1616 has been passed.
Docket number 1616, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept a donation of $30,000 worth of naloxone kits from Aetna via the Boston Public Health Commission, known as BPHC. BPHC staff, in conjunction with the mayor's Office of Recovery Services, will engage in a series of overdose prevention training with staff from the city's property management department, inspectional services department, parks and recreation department, and the Boston Fire Department. The training will be part of a pilot program that the city envisions expanding to other city departments so that staff are trained in overdose prevention and have access to overdose reversal kits.
Councilor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually rise on behalf of my good colleague and Chair of the Committee, Anissa Asabi George, who's a little under the weather. If she's watching, I hope she feels well, or gets better. I'd like to suspend and pass docket number 1616. This is very straightforward. $30,000 worth of Narcan kits go into BPH, and we get those out in the street as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McCarthy. Councilor McCarthy, on behalf of the Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1616. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1616 has been passed.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 1617 and 1618 together?
That would be great. Thank you.
Docket number 1617, message and order to reduce the FY19 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $16,077 to provide funding for the FY19 increase contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and ASME Local 90, I'm sorry, ASME Council 93 Local 230A, the storekeepers. Docket number 1618, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $16,077 for the Boston Public Schools FY19 to cover the FY19 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and ASME Council 93 Local 230A storekeepers. The terms of the contract are September 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2017, and September 1st, 2017 through August 31st, 2020. Major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% effective the first pay period of December of each fiscal year. The agreements also contain other benefits, including new steps. As originally presented to you, the FY19 budget request included a reserve for collective bargaining, a separate appropriation to fund projected collective bargaining increases.
Councilor Ciomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dockets 1617 and 1618 concern an appropriation for the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public School, the Boston School Committee and ASME Council 93 Local 230A. Docket 1617 transfers the funds from the collective bargaining reserve, and docket 1618 authorizes the use of those funds to pay for the contract. The bargaining unit is made up of approximately five members within the Boston Public Schools. The two consecutive agreements extend from September 1, 2016 through August 31st, 2020, with an estimated cost of $57,000 over that four-year period. Language items for this contract include entitlement for the city's paid parental leave benefit. Compensation and other cost items include the 2% wage increase effective in December of each year of the contract, a monthly contribution to the union's prepaid legal services fund, and an increase in the city's contribution to the union's housing trust. The supplemental appropriation that we are authorizing today for this agreement is $16,077. The Committee on Ways and Means has held four hearings on collective bargaining agreements since the beginning of the calendar year. This agreement is substantially similar, following similar policy language changes, cost items, step increases, and wage increase schedule that we have seen before. Therefore, as Chairman of Ways and Means, I recommend the passage of these two dockets.
Thank you, Councilor Ciomo. At this time, Councilor Ciomo, who is the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks suspension of the rules and passage, suspension of the rules, right, Councilor Ciomo? Right. Suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 1617 through 1618. We will take them separately. So all those in favor of passage of docket 1617, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1617 has been passed. For docket 1618, all those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1618 has been passed.
Docket number 1619, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $14,765.56 in the form of a grant, Title III-D Preventative Health awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund information and services to improve the health of seniors in Boston. This council order supplements the preliminary FY17 allocation referenced in docket 0142 with the final FY17 allocation of $12,544 plus $2,221.56 carried over from 2017.
Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
This is the third grant today that I'm moving to suspend and pass, also similar in scope. See, the reoccurring theme here is the health of our elders, our 60-plus population, which is growing. And so it's critical that we continue to make the investment to meet the capacity of the need, and we want to make sure that our elders are aging in community and doing it with dignity and certainly in good health. So this is one more grant to support that. And as the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend and to pass today.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. At this time, Councilor Presley, who is the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1619. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1619 has been passed. Docket 1619 has been passed.
Docket number 1620, message and order authorizing the mayor's office to accept a donation of two wooden city seals from the Massachusetts College of Art and Design. The seal will be laser cut by student technicians. The seal will be used daily in city programs as part of the mayor's podium in furtherance of our efforts to continue supporting the development of the local creative economy.
Councilor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As the Chair of the Arts Committee, I recommend suspension and passage of this docket. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's a donation of two wooden seals that would be laser cut by students. Certainly helps our efforts in promoting and supporting the local creative economy, as the clerk has already stated. So with that, I hope that everyone would vote in favor of passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janey. Councilor Janey, who is the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1620. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1620 has been passed. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 1094, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on July 11, 2018, docket number 1094, an ordinance regarding repayment of back taxes, submits a report recommending the order, the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Councilor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President and Madam Clerk. This is an ordinance that would adopt a local option provided in the Mass General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 62A, that would allow City of Boston residents to negotiate payment plans for and to reduce interest on tax arrears for those with delinquent property taxes. This matter was sponsored by our colleagues, City Council Lydia Edwards and our colleague City Council Red Flynn, referred to the Committee on Government Operations back on July 11. The committee had held a working session on Thursday, September 20. The Committee on Ways and Means also held...
with the final FY17 allocation of $12,544 plus $2,221.56 carried over from 2017.
Council Presley, you have the floor.
This is the third grant today that I'm moving to suspend and pass, also similar in scope. See, the reoccurring theme here is the health of our elders, our 60-plus population, which is growing. And so it's critical that we continue to make the investment to meet the capacity of the need, and we want to make sure that our elders are aging in community and doing it with dignity and certainly in good health. So this is one more grant to support that. And as the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families and Communities, I move to suspend and to pass today.
Thank you, Council Presley. At this time, Council Presley, who is the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1619. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1619 has been passed.
Docket number 1620, message and order authorizing the mayor's office to accept a donation of two wooden city seals from the Massachusetts College of Art and Design. The seal will be laser cut by student technicians. The seal will be used daily in city programs as part of the mayor's podium in furtherance of our efforts to continue supporting the development of the local creative economy.
Council Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As the Chair of the Arts Committee, I recommend suspension and passage of this docket. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's a donation of two wooden seals that would be laser cut by students. Certainly helps our efforts in promoting and supporting the local creative economy, as the clerk has already stated. So with that, I hope that everyone would vote in favor of passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Janey. Council Janey, who is the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1620. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1620 has been passed. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 1094, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on July 11, 2018, docket number 1094, an ordinance regarding repayment of back taxes, submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President and Madam Clerk. This is an ordinance that would adopt a local option provided in the Mass. General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 62A, that would allow City of Boston residents to negotiate payment plans for and to reduce interest on tax arrears for those with delinquent property taxes. This matter was sponsored by our colleagues, City Council Lydia Edwards and our colleague City Council Red Flynn, referred to the Committee on Government Operations back on July 11. The committee had held a working session on Thursday, September 20. The Committee on Ways and Means also held a public hearing chaired by our colleague City Council Mark Siomo with respect to the flexible payment plans for property tax arrears under docket 0626. As originally proposed, docket 1094 provided two options for certain residential taxpayers to enter into a payment plan, with two options for certain commercial taxpayers also being able to enter into payment plans. During the working session that was attended by Chief Financial Officer Emma Handy, Assessing Commissioner Gail Willett, Deputy Director of Policy and Research Development and Neighborhood Development Rob Puro, Elderly Commissioner Emily Shea, and First Collector Treasurer Celia Barton, they testified on behalf of the administration. It was attended by all of our colleagues. They talked about the programs that are currently available to taxpayers and concerns about this proposed legislation. The legislation would simply codify an existing practice and make it more widely accessible to qualified residents. Throughout the working session, the suggestion was made to petition the legislature for a special law to reduce 25% of the down payment currently required by state law, since, as many of our colleagues pointed out, 25% down could still be a significant burden without any support. The administration and committee had concerns about the docket as originally filed, and that's when our colleagues, City Council Lydia Edwards and Council Flynn, rolled up their sleeves and worked with the administration. That resulted in clarifications and additional comments and changes to docket 1094 specifically. One, the residential program has been reshaped to specifically target low-income elders with a five-year repayment offering and 50% interest forgiveness. Two, the commercial program has been eliminated. Three, the eligibility criteria has been simplified and linked to the residential elderly tax exemption criteria as laid out in Section 5(c) of Chapter 59 of the Mass. General Laws. Four, which was really driven by our colleagues, Council Flynn and Council Zakim, and supported by all of our colleagues, was the addition of a new section that requires the city to develop a multilingual material and outreach program regarding the availability of repayment plans and requires that all communications with regards to tax title obligations to be in compliance with language access ordinance. Five, addition of a section requiring the Collector Treasurer to report to the council by July 1 of 2020 and July 1 of 2021 on the program's utilization, revenue collection, and recommendations for modifications or expansion to other residents. And six, should this pass, the ordinance goes into effect on January 1, 2019. So that's some and substance of why I'm recommending as the Chair that docket 1094 ought to pass in a draft, but would obviously defer to the lead sponsor and others to weigh in. This is obviously, it's an exciting and great opportunity for this council to work closely with the administration, to put something out there that is going to have a real, meaningful, direct benefit for those that are struggling to stay in the city and also to continue to afford their homes. This will give them an opportunity to work something out with the city in a very, obviously, sensitive, at the same time compassionate way, and it's the direct result of our colleagues' efforts on behalf of this body. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to not only thank the co-sponsor, Council Flynn, but also to thank both Council Siomo for hosting the hearing right away and actually starting a very robust, very good informative conversation. And I also wanted to thank Council Flaherty for your leadership and government ops. I want to be clear how we got here, and to give credit to the activists and the grassroots individuals who are in the trenches every day, trying to make sure that people stay in their homes. And that is to my former colleagues at Greater Boston Legal Services, Nadine Cohen and Todd Kaplan, who really kicked off this conversation years ago with the city, and even before I was at the Office of Housing Stability. The issue really being that when it came down to being able to make right with the city, if you owed the city taxes, we were really offering people 25% down in 10 months to catch up. And if you couldn't, well, then the city could proceed with a lien. And that was an unnecessary place that we put a lot of taxpayers, who wanted to do right but really couldn't afford that kind of payment plan. The State House had already taken the leadership and had passed this local option, and many cities had opted into that. And so in talking with Nadine and Todd and crafting the right kind of what we thought initially, a very expansive version of this, we started that conversation with Council Siomo, and we had a very robust hearing. And the administration was very good at explaining some of the concerns that they had, but also making sure that we understood the permanency of this kind of opt-in, and that we understood that as we're going to be changing the way people can relate and pay back with the city, we had to make sure we got it right. So the working session was particularly informative, and while I presented maybe a more expansive one that involved some commercial entities, I think at the end of the day, this process has taught me and made me a better city councillor. Again, I want to thank all of my colleagues for your mentorship, your kind words, the one-on-one conversations with you or your staff, and making sure that you were making sure that this bill was going to be the best that it could be. I want to be clear that right now, that 25% is something that we should tackle, and I intend to file a home rule petition next year to make sure that that 25% is dealt with. It is an unnecessary burden when people, again, are trying to make right. But for right now, the City of Boston's doing everything it can with this payment plan. And I want to thank again the city, the administration, for their leadership. Specifically, I want to also thank Emma Handy, Gail Willett, Celia Barton, and Neil Doherty for their work, for their back and forth, for the conversations, for the many, many emails that they were responsive to. I want to also thank my Policy Director, Joel Wool. This is the first one we've crafted together in the office, and I just wanted to acknowledge the work that you did, day in, day out, in getting back and doing all the research. Another thing I want to add that this does, not only does it provide a five-year payment plan and forgives 50% of the interest, but we thought that the language itself within the opt-in allowed for some flexibility in interpreting, interpreting the 25%, whereas there's no actual language that says it has to be one lump sum payment. So as the administration was already being flexible and kind and responsive to a lot of folks, we thought we made sure that that flexibility was also enshrined. We did a lot of work, and you were all there at the working sessions, in the private meetings. And so I'm asking my colleagues to help bring it home. We've done the work. We've responded to the seniors who need this help. They are stuck in a very unique position. And yes, in that working session, thank you, Council Zakim, thank you, Council Flynn, we did discover that a lot of the folks who were getting lien notices only got them in English. And when we are talking about people being able to respond and advocate for themselves, we knew as the City of Boston, we could do better. And I'm so happy that that language was added as well. We've come a long way. I want to thank you so much for your feedback, making sure that the payment plan came in earlier than necessarily fiscal year, Council Janey. I want to thank you all so much for the feedback and making sure that we crafted the best ordinance possible. So I just, we need to vote on this, and I'm asking you all to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank my colleague and friend Lydia Edwards for her steadfast leadership on this important issue, as well as your persistent efforts to improve housing stability across our city. I'd also like to acknowledge the great work of my friend and colleague, Michael Flaherty, for his work on this issue. I know that supporting the elderly has always been a top issue of yours. We just heard some bad news in South Boston, possibly closing of the Marion Manor, but it's people like Michael Flaherty that have always been there for our elderly, so we want to say thank you for your work, Michael. We also like to thank Mayor Walsh for always being an advocate for our seniors and low-income residents as well. Thank you to his team, making this policy on their end. I want to thank Council Siomo for your leadership. I've enjoyed working both with the Walsh administration and Council Edwards to provide more tools for our elderly residents in terms of housing stability. Making adjustments to the interest rates in a longer time horizon of five years will provide much-needed relief for our low-income seniors. And I just want to say thank you to Council Zakim as well, and for Council Presley for her longtime support of our elderly, for our seniors, and for the disableds. Moreover, I am proud that this ordinance reflects our values of inclusion for all our communities in the City of Boston, as it will increase accessibility for non-English-speaking residents. Tax bills can be intimidating to all of us, and this ordinance will make things a little easier for our seniors that have fallen on tough times. I look forward to having this ordinance signed into law, and again, just want to say thank you to all my colleagues, to the Walsh administration, and to everybody here that really has dedicated their life to helping our elderly and helping our disableds. And this will go a long way in improving the lives of so many people in the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Anyone else looking to speak? Okay. At this time, Council Flaherty, who's the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1094 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1094 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1621, Council Siomo offered the following order. Pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, the residential factor in the City of Boston for FY 2019 shall be the minimum residential factor, as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 1a. And be it further that pursuant to Chapter 59, Section 5(c), as amended, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 35% of the average assessed value of all Class I residential parcels in the City of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2019.
Council Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is an annual obligation of this body in order to adopt the highest residential factor to pass along the exemption of 35% to our owner occupants in the city, and to also certify our tax rates. Just wanted to put that on the record. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Siomo. Docket 1621 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1622, Council Edwards and Wu offered the following order for hearing regarding pension fund disclosure, socially responsible investment, and reinvestment.
Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to just, first, suspend the rules and add Council O'Malley.
Any objections? Nope. Madam Clerk, if you could add Council O'Malley as a third co-sponsor? Thank you. Thank you, Council Edwards.
So, as I've stated before, where we choose to invest our money is also an indication of where we prioritize, not only our hearts, but our understanding of where the world should go, and also understanding of what we should be investing for our future. How and where we put our billions of dollars, of our retirement money, is a statement. It is not just about the fiscal responsibility, it's about the moral character of a city. And so this hearing specifically is calling for that kind of question about our character, about our investment in our future, and assuring that we are not, on one end, investing in an unsustainable future while at the same time fighting for regulations and ordinances to make us more sustainable. And it comes not only about our sustainability with our environment. We've done this before, as a matter of fact, when it came to making social statements about apartheid. Council Yancey, actually, is one of the leaders on that, in assuring that we withdrew our money from South Africa and any investment with them inasmuch as they were going to support apartheid. So we have done this before, we have had statements, we have assured that our moral character and our financial investments are aligned, in assuring that we have a more just, safe, and inclusive world. So how we continue to have those conversations and making sure that those conversations are not necessarily issue-specific is what this ordinance is about. The leadership, again, with the new generation of city councillors, my predecessors, Council Wu and Council O'Malley, again, started with how we're going to deal with this when it comes to our investment in our future. And recently, we've been approached and proudly been talking with folks who are really concerned about the growing investment in private prisons. And again, I personally will go on the record, and I'm sure some of my colleagues will, I appore privatization of prison. Why? Because if you privatize those kinds of things, you need prisoners, you need to make sure that you have an industry that feeds them. And I don't believe that making money off of corrections should be something that the state is involved in. So that's me just putting it out there. But for those who may disagree, this conversation, again, is no longer about issue-specific. So we're not fighting about climate change, we're not fighting about the divestment of funds for private prisons, we're talking about where the moral character of the city goes. So this conversation is going to ask, what are the standards for divesting? What are the standards for investing? And how can we, as a city council, help assure that we set those basic standards going forward in any way, shape, or form? But it starts always with transparency. Where's the money now? That's what we want to have first. Before we go making decisions about where and what it's doing, and whether it's actually worth our money or not, we need to have a full-on conversation about transparency and seeing exactly where our retirement's going, how much of it might be in different industries, and as are spread amongst mutual funds. In many cases, while we think we're doing the right thing, some of our money is actually not. So we're going to encourage a transparent conversation, first, not issue-specific, just about the best government that we can have. All of our retirements are involved in this. So we are not only as stewards of the city involved, but we personally, financially, are involved. And I think it would be ironic for some of us who are leaders in the sustainable movement to be retired on funds in the fossil fuels. It would be ironic for some of us who are firmly against private prisons to be retiring and collecting a check one day off of the funds from private prisons. We don't want that. We want to all be able to go to sleep one day thinking that we did everything we could to make sure, again, that our morals, our characters, and our financial investments are completely aligned. So I'm asking, again, for a good, but tough conversation to have about how we're going to invest going forward. And I hope you'll join me, and I hope you guys will consider also signing on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much to my dear colleagues on this issue, the District Council from East Boston and the At-Large Council from Roselandale. It was incredibly well said, and I really look forward to the opportunity for us to convene the relevant stakeholders and have this conversation because it's important. It is important, we often say, that budgets are value statements. I would argue that how we invest our pension funds are as well. And as it relates to a number of issues, including the privatization of prisons, which I agree with, I'd argue gun manufacturers as well is something I want to make sure that we're not invested in. But as it relates to fossil fuels, which is the work that the At-Large Council from Roselandale and I did several years ago, there's a reason why Denmark divested from fossil fuels in 2012, and why Sweden did in 2014, and why New York City did last year. Part of it is recognizing the threat that fossil fuels has to our planet. More often than not, it's also much better business sense to invest funds in renewable energy sources. I've said at virtually every meeting that I've stood and talked about environmental issue, that every fiscal conservative ought to be an environmentalist as well, and that is because, more often than not, sound environmental policy also benefits the ratepayer, the taxpayer. And there is a reason why you look at sort of what's known as black energy, the fossil fuels, gas, oil, et cetera. The cost of that per kilowatt hour is 9, 10, 11 cents. You look at fossil fuels, you look at, I mean, you look at renewable sources, you look at wind, you look at solar, hydra, that's about 3, 4 cents per kilowatt hour. So what is happening is that you've got, you know, the oil prices are bottoming out, and fossil fuels no longer offer the same return. It's almost like two lines, you know, on a graph, where they're becoming less effective and less profitable for pension funds, whereas the renewable sources are taking off like a skyrocket. So we can do something good here, we can also make sure that we are getting the best return for the employees and the retirees of the City of Boston. This is a win-win here. It's important to be methodical about this and make sure that we have all the information, which is precisely why Council from District 1 and At-Large Council from Roselandale and I are working on this, sort of taking up the first step. It's unlikely we will solve this by the end of the calendar year, but we're going to begin this conversation and my hope be able to affect some real change in short order. So delighted to partner with them and looking forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to thank the co-sponsors, and particularly, I'm going to go break the rules, but Council Edwards, for your thoughtful approach to this and reviving our drive that I was really pleased to partner with Council O'Malley on a few years ago, just to look at ourselves and be able to look others in the eye when we're asking various sectors or other leaders, other cities, to join us in the fight for climate resiliency and adaptation and all of the moral and ethical components of that vision that we want to see as a city. So yes, this is about making sure we are doing everything in our power to be the moral beacons in city government. Yes, this is the economically sound and smart decision to make. But fundamentally, I also want to make sure we are really recognizing how much influence we do have, how much power we have, not just as a council, to put parameters around what is happening at the city and how our funds are being spent, how taxpayer dollars are being spent, our primary function, but also for us to be thinking about the city's power as a participant in the markets, as a spender, and somewhat, an entity that's conducting these transactions, whether it's on our supplier diversity and inclusionary equity. and inclusionary equity in city contracting or food procurement or thinking about how retirees' very precious dollars are being spent. We can have a wide-ranging vision that hits all of the goals that we're trying to achieve if we are transparent, if we're thoughtful and proactive about what our values are and then map putting the steps in place to get there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the makers and the co-sponsors for this. Definitely a good conversation to talk about whether we disinvest in fossil fuels. When I was first lobbied on this subject, it was a person from New York, which I thought was kind of funny, a person from New York coming in to lobby me. She was talking about disinvestment in the prison systems. And I asked, do we invest in the prison systems? Now, is Boston money going into those systems? I don't know the answer to that. That's something I'd definitely like to see. If that's the case, we shouldn't be doing that. But there's also another point. The last time we had a hearing and we had the retirement board in here, I asked the question, if we were investing Boston money in the Boston real estate market, and we weren't, busiest, best real estate market in the city and we're not investing in it for whatever reason? So, that's kind of the angle that I would like to see if there's a possibility to. You know, we use a lot of the money that you see around here, maybe union pension money or other pensions. I don't believe Boston or Massachusetts pension money is investing in the Boston real estate market, which, when the rest of the country crashes, and it will crash, I think we're close, Boston is going to remain strong. Not as strong as we are now. We're going to take a bump, and I say when it crashes because I think it's pretty close. So, thank you, Madam President, and I would like to sign on.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if we could add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Presley, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 1622 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1623, Counsel Zachem offered the following order for hearing regarding the use of public ways.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Brought this hearing forward as a result of several years of futile efforts in cooperation with many of my neighbors, civic associations, certain departments in this building to find a equitable arrangement, a solution for the proliferation of street races, road races, and marches, and road closures. That happens, I think, throughout the city but with an undue burden, particularly in the Back Bay neighborhood. And it's something that we've had no success moving forward on, unfortunately. And just last weekend, there was another new road race requiring closure of residential streets, preventing many neighbors from getting, they were able to leave their homes but weren't able to come back. People getting, I heard from folks who are trying to take their kids to piano practice or to school on some other days, obviously not on Saturday. And it's something that needs to be addressed. I'm looking forward to hearing from our Transportation Department, from Special Events, from the Police Department on how we can do this, whether it makes sense to have a, you know, corporate challenge with 10,000 runners closing off numerous residential streets for hours on a weekend when we have other neighborhoods, certainly on the weekends, that are not active residential neighborhoods, like the Financial District, like some parts of other areas of the city where it's predominantly businesses and it will not be as intrusive on everyone's daily lives. So, it's something I want to find a solution to. It's something that comes up regularly. As you see in the hearing order, you know, folks are excited to host the marathon in the Back Bay. We love that. The Walk for Hunger. There are some traditional road races, walks, and all for good causes that are welcomed in the neighborhood. But particularly for some of these smaller ones, which are not as well-publicized, everyone knows when the marathon is. People make their plans. Sure, there's sometimes inconveniences, but one, the Boston Police Department has been incredibly accommodating to people who live in the area. That's something we worked with when Commissioner Evans was in. I look forward to continuing to work on with Commissioner Gross to make sure people can get in and out. But there's a lot of notice on that. Everyone's talking about, we all know when the marathon is. To have, I think it was a National Realtors 5K last week sort of pop up and people were expecting to have house guests. I was trying to go in and out of my own home, and this happens over and over again. So, we need to find a solution for that while making sure we're still ready and excited to host the next World Series parade, or the next Patriots parade down Boylston Street. So, that's it. I look forward to having a hearing quickly and to finding a solution for this.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Anyone else looking to speak on this or add their name? Oh, Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flynn, and Counsel Janey. Docket 1623 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1624, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1625. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1624 has been passed.
Docket number 1625, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1625. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1625 has been passed.
Docket number 1626, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Flynn.
Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1626. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1626 has been passed.
Docket number 1627, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Janey.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1627. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1627 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that we have two late-file matters. One is a personnel order. Madam Clerk, if we could start with that one?
Thank you, Madam President.
I'm sorry, not a personnel order. It is a note from Counsel Asabi George.
Anissa Asabi George, Boston City Councilor at Large, November 7, 2018. Dear Madam President, I write to inform you that I am not able to attend Wednesday's council meeting. I am recovering from recent surgery. I would like to express my support of docket number 1616 in order to accept a donation of $30,000 worth of NACALON kits from Etna via the Boston Public Health Commission. Having access to overdose reversal kits and training on overdose prevention across our city's departments is crucial as we fight the symptoms of the opioid crisis. Sincerely, Anissa Asabi George, Counsel at Large, City of Boston.
The first late-file matter will be placed on file. Moving on to the second late-file matter.
Offered by City Councilor Ayana Presley, order for hearing to listen to communities impacted by violence and trauma. Whereas gun violence is a public health crisis and epidemic that is experienced at various levels throughout the City of Boston. Whereas the majority of shootings happen in a cluster of just three neighborhoods, Dorchester, Roxbury, and Matapan. Whereas addressing violence and trauma is a challenge for the whole city, but it must be done in partnership with and by listening to the communities most impacted by it. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to understand the challenge faced by communities impacted by violence and trauma and gather their recommendations regarding the city's response to city's response system. And that such communities be invited to testify and that representatives of the mayor's office and Boston Police Department, Boston Public Health Commission, Boston Public Schools, Boston Center for Youth and Families, Suffolk County District Attorney's Office, Suffolk County Sheriff's Office, Boston Medical Center, and faith-based organizations and response teams and other interested parties to be invited to actively listen, filed on November 7, 2018.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that I'm proudest of during my tenure here on the council is that, thanks to the accommodation of our former council president, Mike Ross, I was able to, in the support of my colleagues, to create this policy committee, the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, the first city council committee to name the issue of trauma. And I remember when I was first running for the Boston City Council and was asked, what would I do to address the achievement and opportunity gap? And I said, to treat trauma. I was quite literally laughed out of room. People accused me of coddling kids, making excuses for them, or perhaps they made assumptions and marginalized who's impacted by trauma in our schools, in our communities, and in our city. I think after the Marathon bombing, understanding trauma and the residual aftermath and the aftershocks of it, there are some in this room that were close to that finish line, but many who were nowhere near it and are still experiencing the aftershocks of that traumatic event. And there are communities disproportionately bearing similar trauma and living in intergenerational trauma throughout the City of Boston. We convened in that hearing the first-ever listening-only hearing. Some reported that it was the first in the nation. And by listening only, that means that, in that instance, we heard for almost four hours from almost 300 families who have been robbed of a loved one due to gun violence. We had to listen to their very painful and sobering accounts, and we learned a lot. But we didn't just listen, we responded. Because of the recommendations that came out of that hearing, there was initiated a monthly group of providers and coordinators to improve their communications and the services that they provide. There was a bereavement room established at Boston Medical Center. We also learned at that hearing that it wasn't just about gun violence, that there was an increase in stabbings and knife use. And so, coming out of that, we passed an ordinance to restrict the sale of knives on push carts and at bodegas. And trauma has become a word as part of the daily lexicon in the City of Boston. No longer does someone ask for me to defend why I'm talking about it or to define what it is. We know now that it is not only a barrier to learning, but it is choking at the promise of families, communities, this city, and our Commonwealth. And so, I invite you to participate in what will be a historic second listening-only hearing where all we can do is listen. Providers and the city and all of us, don't react, don't respond, simply actively listen. And we will do, at the close of that process, what we did at the end of the first, and that is to synthesize those recommendations, to present a report of policy recommendations, other things that we might do to better ensure that there is trauma response and recovery in the City of Boston for families who have been impacted by violence. So, I ask that you would all consider signing on and look forward to an expedited hearing. I'll be here for a little bit longer, for better or for worse.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And I just rise to thank the maker of this very important hearing order. It's certainly an issue that is affecting too many folks in our city, and they oftentimes are living in just certain neighborhoods. Me personally, you know, I've been traumatized from, yes, the Marathon bombing, but also gun violence in my community. And I often wonder and worry, and I'm deeply concerned about how this is really impacting our young people and whether or not our schools are truly able to respond when our young people experience trauma in their neighborhoods. I think this is very timely, that we are coming not only on the close of summer and going into fall and winter, but the close of our calendar year to really have this conversation. Earlier in the year, I co-sponsored a hearing with Matt O'Malley, Counsel Matt O'Malley, on summer violence. And so, I think it's important that we revisit this issue, that we keep it constant in our minds on how trauma is impacting all of us in our community, but particularly our children. Not too long ago, maybe a month or so ago, I was leaving an event in my district, and I was at a bus stop on my way home on Warren Street. I was with my mom and my three-year-old granddaughter. I was holding her hand, and sirens suddenly rushed up Warren Street, you know, not knowing what had happened. And I know how I respond as someone who has experienced trauma, just that my heart is beating faster, my breath is a little shorter. But I'm an adult, and I'm able to kind of quickly process. And as I'm holding Rosie's hand and she's squeezing my hand tighter, just what's going through her mind? And not knowing, you know, she doesn't necessarily have the language or the vocabulary to really express herself and how she's failing and really process what is happening. And this happens every single day in some of our communities in the City of Boston. And whether, you know, and I have no idea, I don't, you know, what that, what those police cars were responding to. But too many times and too many children are experiencing this on a daily basis. And so, again, I just want to thank Counsel Presley. Certainly want to thank my other colleagues on the council for raising this important issue. And we're not going to, we're not going to be successful in really cutting down gun violence and other forms of violence in our community if we don't deal with trauma. I believe that, wholeheartedly. And so, we've got to deal with trauma on the council. So, again, thank you, thank all of you. And I look forward to holding this hearing as soon as we can. Thank you. And please add my name, yes.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Janey, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Baker, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. The second late-file matter will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety in Criminal Justice. And just thank you for bearing with us in terms of the late files. Counsel Presley will be away on certain council dates, so thank you, as I wink at Counsel Edwards. Thank you. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? Okay, moving right along. Okay, moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that we have one late-file matter, which, oh, do you want to move something? We have one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, the late-file matter is added to the consent agenda. And the Chair moves at this time for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Council O'Malley, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement about pride.
Go right ahead.
I want to echo what you alluded to at the beginning, Madam President, and talk about how proud I am, and I know we all are, to my colleague, to my left, and our colleague. It was eight years ago where Ayana Presley and I both joined this body, albeit different times. She came in at the normal election time, I came in at a special 10 months later. We had known each other long before that. I think we first met when I was a staffer for Andrea Cabral and you were a staffer for John Kerry, and we had that bond that staffers have, particularly working for strong personalities. And I was so impressed, I think back to when I was first sworn in, completely different council, with the exception of Council Siomo, was, everyone was different, the mayor was different, the times of the country were certainly different. But I knew then what Boston knew, what now the United States knows, what a remarkable leader you are, and just how proud we are of you, and your drive, your determination, your empathy, your work ethic, your ability to really build a better city, and now you're going to build a better country for all of us, particularly those that don't have the voice. You are a champion of this city. We are so proud of you, the way that you conducted your campaign, and while I said I'm going to really miss sitting next to you, I'm so glad that you will be standing up for all of us and people across the Commonwealth, and we're so proud of you, Congresswoman -elect.
Council Flynn, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Madam President. May I make a brief statement on upcoming Veterans Day?
Yes. Go right ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I know we do have a large listening audience that watch this every Wednesday, and a lot of them are made up of veterans and military families across our, across our city, and I just wanted to wish them a happy Veterans Day, I wanted to wish their families a happy Veterans Day. And I just wanted to highlight a couple, a couple names, if I may, of some people that are doing some great work. When I do go to a lot of veterans' events, I go mostly on behalf of the city council, and I acknowledge the great work that city councillors have made for so many years on veterans' issues. We have an excellent department for the city. Right now, it's, the commissioner is Giselle Sterling, she's doing outstanding work. Prior to that, we had Francisco Arena, and one of Michael's friends, Gene Valencourt, Char Madarazo, is one of Tim McCarthy's, Tim McCarthy's friends. But we're proud of the outstanding work our veterans have made across our city. We think of John Mullin, WWII veteran that is still with us, I know he's watching today. Tom Lyons, who's retiring from the state this week as well. Joe Zink, who's a good friend of Maureen Feeney from Dorchester, was active in the Vietnam Veterans in Dorchester. We also have great work the city's done on women's veterans' issues. They have their specific issues that the VA is working closely with. We have LGBT veterans that have other issues that hopefully our city and state and our country can provide strong leadership to those veterans. Tony Molina is the president of the Puerto Rican Vietnam Veterans as well, he's a close friend of Michelle Wu, and they're celebrating an anniversary coming up, and I'm proud to represent the city council in the South End for that event. And I just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to work on this important issue, but when a veteran serves, so doesn't their family. And I just wanted to say thank you to all our military families that work for our city, that live in our city, that do so much to help build this great city in our country. Thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, Council Flynn, and thank you for your service. So thank you. And happy Veterans Day to everyone. Just before we move on to memorials, just want to go back to the second late-file matter for reconsideration. Any objections to reconsidering to move that matter from the committee, it was assigned to a different committee? Any objections? No. Because this is going to be one of Council Presley's sort of last great hearings, we're going to move it from the Committee on Public Safety in Criminal Justice, and thank you, Council McCarthy, to Council Presley's Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. So the second late-file matter will be assigned to Council Presley's Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. So thank you. At this time, I would like everyone to please rise, my colleagues as well as guests, as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Janey, Margie Shaheed, and Samuel Beeman, Sr. For Council O'Malley, Michael Dugan. For Council Flaherty, Mark McGrath. And from the entire city council, Tony Molina. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, the Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, November 28, at 12:00 noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.